Sorry, music.
Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women. Roll call please, Mrs. Powers.
Vice Chair Burns.
Present.
Commissioner Devine.
Here.
Commissioner Garsovanian.
Present.
Ex officio Jaborian.
Present.
Commissioner Taschen.
Here.
Ex officio Yegian.
Present.
And Chair Miller.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Powers. Next item on the agenda, please.
At 1A is a report regarding the posting of the agenda. The agenda for the November 19, 2012, meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside of City Hall on or before November 16, 2012.
Great. Thank you.
And at 2, we have introductions and presentations. And at A is Alzheimer's Awareness. That is the focus for the commission this month. And we have with us Dr. Donna Benton, the Director of the Los Angeles Caregiver Resource Center.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here. I am going to be presenting. Oh, good. I'm presenting on Alzheimer's. And actually, I'm just going to do it in a little more simplistic version. We're going to look at how's your memory. So, in general, yeah, not good. That's what almost everyone always says. But pretty much, the best way, because this is Alzheimer's Awareness Month, I think that, you know, one of the things is, from behalf of the Los Angeles Caregiver Resource Center, one of the people that we deal the most with are caregivers to family members who have dementia, usually either Alzheimer's dementia, or stroke dementia, or some other form of dementia. For family caregivers, which are about one out of every four people are family caregivers in our county and all over. And in fact, I imagine some of you have been a caregiver or know a caregiver from your own family. So everyone at some point is touched by caregiving. And so our services are part of the statewide system of services so that we can address and help family caregivers, who are generally the most stressed by somebody who has dementia. We provide comprehensive services for the family caregiver through information, resources, and direct support services, also with respite, legal, and retreats. But one of the things that many times people worry about as they get older is, what's normal? What can I expect from my memory as I get older? So, let me start with, almost all changes that you observe are normal. So, the first question to you is, do you think that having Alzheimer's is a normal part of aging?
No.
No. Although, for many, in many places, people believe that to have memory problems are going to be normal, that you automatically develop Alzheimer's, when usually your risk for Alzheimer's disease is low until after the age of 80. So, it's not a normal part of aging. So, you've got to know, well, then what's going on when I'm experiencing some memory problems? So, generally, if you think about your memory, you have, really what's normal is you just have forgetfulness as you get older. And you know why that happens? Because, think of your brain as a giant file cabinet or computer that has never been wiped out. When you go for a specific piece of information, it just takes you longer to find it, because you're looking for something very specific. So, a normal change as we get older is that it takes longer for us to access a memory, to get to a specific piece of information. But, as we get older, what happens is, well, you get a little frustrated because it takes you a little longer, and then you start worrying that, I have Alzheimer's disease. Oh, my God. Something's wrong. This isn't normal. And then the anxiety adds to the fact that you can't remember now, and it starts building on itself, and you then may have a complete memory lapse. But, it's normal for it to take longer, because as our memories change over time, in order for us to develop memories, we have to have three stages for memory development. You have to do registration, retention, and recall. So, at the most basic level, one of the things that happens is, as we get older, we also have physiological changes to our body. So, all five of our senses tend to decline, and in order for us to have a sharp memory, all your senses have to be sharp. So, as you get older, you may have, you're more likely to maybe have a hearing loss, or sight, taste, smell, the things that help make and form our memories. You're also more likely to be having, maybe taking new medications, having more stressors, things that you're worried about. And all of these can add up to what we see as memory problems, and the anxiety that goes around that. But, having Alzheimer's disease is not a normal part of aging. So, it's normal to forget an experience. You know, you don't know it exactly, but you have an idea of what it is. But you usually don't forget the entire experience. So, if, how many people here have actually forgotten their keys every once in a while? Misplaced your keys? Yeah. Okay. How many people here don't know what your car keys are for? That's the difference between normal and abnormal problems with your memory. So, if you go shopping, and you forgot where you parked, is anyone ever, you know, you just kind of forget? Yeah. Okay. But maybe, when you were parking, you were thinking ahead, and you're going, oh, okay, I've got to go get this there, and you weren't paying attention. Well, part of our memory is that you have to pay attention. And if you're not concentrating on something, you're going to forget. What happens is, as we get older, we start thinking that our memories should be like when we were a child. And while a child of, say, 10, may know all parts of an airplane, how many of you would want to actually be in the plane that they're flying? No. So, as we get older, the experience is what counts, and we can't expect our memories to be the same as when we're younger. We use it in a different way. We access memories in a different way. And so, wisdom, how you go, what things are important, are accessed differently. It's a little slower, you retrieve it. You have more medications, anxieties, things that can go along with that. And that's why our memories change over time. So, you can follow instructions, but it's abnormal to become slowly unable to follow any kind of directions. And this is what you'll see with people who have Alzheimer's disease, that over time, the more steps you give them, the more lost they may get in the thought of trying to follow things. Using notes, how many people here keep a calendar right now? Oh, good. You all have Alzheimer's disease, right? Because, if you're 80, and somebody notices you're taking notes, they go, oh, you've got such a bad memory. And all you have to really say is, I had to take a calendar when I was 20 and 30. But somehow, we have an expectation, as we get older, that we shouldn't be taking notes anymore, that we shouldn't be keeping a calendar. And that's kind of that ageism that comes along. So, you have to talk to yourself, so that you aren't so hard on yourself, when you're doing things that you've probably done all your life, as memory aids, but for some reason, now that we're older, we don't think we should have memory aids. It's quite the opposite. You've learned from experience, you should do that. Also, with Alzheimer's disease, what happens over time is, the person is no longer able to do self-care. They may forget to brush their teeth. You know, when you go to brush your teeth, how many steps do you think it's involved in brushing your teeth? Pick up toothbrush? There are a lot. We think it's so simple, right now, you just think, you pick it up, brush your teeth. But...
Water on, toothpaste.
Toothpaste, water on, find the bathroom, know how to rinse, know how much to put on there. There's so many steps just involved in what seems to be a simple thing, like doing that. So, when you see someone struggling with simple things like that, then you know that that's abnormal. Now, you may, you know, not want to, and that's a whole different issue, but it's not the same. So, it's really, if you're not paying attention to your basic needs. The other thing that's really important to note about Alzheimer's disease, and about any kind of changes that you may see in your memory, is how your mood is affecting your memory. As you get anxious, or depressed, or overly stressed, how many times have you found that you've forgotten stuff? That happens at every age. When you get older, it becomes, you think, oh, because we all are scared. But, as those things happen, those are normal. And that's normal for anyone, because again, that interferes with how you're paying attention. I'm going to make sure I know, I only have 10 minutes, so I don't want to run over my time. So, the things that really, that you can kind of control, when you're worried about your memory, are anxiety. If you're very tired, we know that we don't concentrate again, and we can have memory problems. Certainly, make trying to be as healthy as possible, keeping active. Alcohol and drugs are always something that will affect your memory. So, the things that you can do to help yourself, and to help your memory overall, is, you know, you try to control your blood pressure. You have to get enough sleep. These aren't really magical things, how you manage your stress. Remember that the same medication that you were taking when you were 50, may not affect you the same when you're 60 or 70. So, you could be taking the same dose, but it may not metabolize the same. So, it's important to always recheck your medications, because many times, as we get older, medications tend to affect our memory. Illnesses, like a UTI for women in particular, don't present the same as when you're in your 20s. And so, you may have more of a confusion, rather than feeling any physical symptoms of a UTI. So, again, those are things that are always reversible, and we want to make sure that, before you go and think that you have Alzheimer's disease, you check off all the things that you are reversible and treatable, like medications, and medication, medical diseases, exercise, and stress. So, you want to keep mentally fit. We already know, exercise has been found to be very, very helpful across the board. Am I okay on time? And the rule of thumb, if you remember that you've forgotten, then you're probably okay. And that's about it. So, I'll leave it open. I also want to let you know that I gave you some resources, which was the pink sheet that actually talks about normal versus abnormal aging, and it goes over a lot of what I just told you. I gave you also a white sheet that provides the, what are resources for family caregivers who may be caring for somebody with Alzheimer's disease. And in particular, family members who are caring for someone with dementia often feel isolated and alone. So, we are part of our system of care through the Los Angeles Caregiver Resource Center, is to make sure that the caregiver has like a one-stop shopping center. When they call, no one calls us to say, I need help. They are always calling for the person that they're caring for. And we sometimes are the first ones to ask, well, how are you doing? And they're always shocked, and they're going, why do you want to know? Because, we know that if that person, it's like what happens on an airplane, if they don't put their oxygen on first, they're not going to be there in the long run to help the person next to them who may need the help. So, we always want to make sure that the caregiver no longer feels isolated, alone, stressed. And I'm actually right on time. So, thank you. If you have any questions or comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a few questions that I'd like to ask. Thank you very much. Dr. Benton, I know you mentioned memory loss as a typical warning sign of AD. Let's just call it AD, because it's easy for me to say that. Can you tell us other typical warning signs of AD, other than memory loss, specifically things dealing with confusion, and perhaps inability to multitask?
Right. And as I was saying, one of the things is, you'll find with, depending on the stage, but in the early stages, maybe examples of poor judgment, not being able to, getting lost in familiar surroundings. You'll find that personal care may not be taken care of. The person may become more defensive, saying, oh, I did that, or accusatory, saying, oh, somebody took something because they don't remember where they place things.
For our audience, what are the four As of AD?
The four As of AD? I don't think I have four As of AD.
Okay.
You may.
No, I've heard that somehow, when they diagnose, or try to diagnose AD, it's either cognitive or psychiatric.
Right. Oh, you mean, oh, okay. It's actually have the three Ds, is you want to diagnose, you want a differential diagnosis between depression, delirium, and dementia. So, what you're looking for is, you want to make sure, what I generally say is, before you think you have Alzheimer's disease, we want to make sure that you're, that the person isn't suffering from depression, so that, because that very often looks like, can look like Alzheimer's disease, or a delirium, which could be caused by medication or an illness. So, you want to rule out anything that's like a depression or a delirium, before you move towards the diagnosis of dementia, a type of dementia, and remembering that dementia is just a very broad term for a group of problems.
So, if someone suspects that someone has AD, the first thing that they should do is probably seek to health care.
Is always, always, just go to a doctor. Yes. You want a good diagnosis.
Okay. And what are some of the tests in order to, for a doctor to come up with that diagnosis, even though it won't be 100%?
Right. Right. So, they're probably, you know, they're going to, first of all, do a full physical, then they'll do a blood test to make sure, again, as part of the physical, that there isn't some underlying, underlying disease going on. They may or may not do a brain scan, usually like a CT scan, or an MRI can be done. And then, it's really that process of elimination. Then they're also going to do, hopefully, they will do a full psychosocial evaluation to make sure that, are there other stresses in the person's life? Are there, has the person recently moved? Has there been a death? You know, others, or some other kind of losses that may, again, be causing that person to have, to exhibit what appears to be a dementia or Alzheimer's disease. So, when you put all of that together, you interview, you talk to the caregivers, you talk to family and friends, and then you get a better picture of what kind of things is the person struggling with. So, the goal is to have the person at their optimal, being able to care for themselves at the best level they can. But, it really is a process of elimination, and there are very good diagnostic centers that I, if you, if your physician isn't a specialist in diagnosing, and most aren't, you want to make sure you go to a neurologist, and that you seek a comprehensive assessment, which you can get through, like a UCLA, or USC, and there are different diagnostic centers.
Okay. And once a diagnosis is made, what are the treatments?
There's a combination of medication, psychosocial, and psychosocial interventions are probably the best. Now, I'm not going to go into all the medications. The medications generally help in the early stages of the disease. So, there are medicines that can help kind of prolong the stage, so that the person is more able to continue with their self-care and activities of daily living. But, there's no, at this point, there's no cure. And then the psychosocial interventions really help to make sure that you can continue to lead, have a quality of life, so that you can continue functioning at the best level, so that maybe, you may not remember exactly how to put clothes together, but if somebody helps lay it out, or gives you a choice of one, one or two outfits, then you're able to dress yourself, or somebody gives you cues. So, there are a lot of excellent interventions to continue to help the person.
And that's where...
And the family, and that's what we...
And that's where, that's where you come in.
And that's where the LA Caregiver Resource Center comes in.
Beautiful. Okay. And very briefly, can you just further elaborate how someone contacts you in order to obtain your services?
Sure.
And some of the services that you provide?
Sure. It all starts with a phone call. So, can I give the phone number?
Yes, please.
1-800-540-4442. And when you make that call, we're going to really start by asking you what's going on, and then we do a full assessment of what's going on with the family, and then we come up with a care plan, that will then link the person to either services that we provide, or other services in the community, which might be meals, or legal information. Maybe they haven't had a good diagnosis, and so we would get them to a clinic, or make sure that their doc, you know, they talk to their doctor. We really provide step by step, and an individualized care plan for the family.
And your office is recently relocated?
Our office is, actually, since we do everything on the phone, I always say, it's really a phone call.
A phone call.
It's a phone call, and then from there, we, and then we have services that are done by phone, by web, within the community. So, we're all throughout, we serve all of LA County, certainly. This includes Glendale. And so, we're available all over.
And then finally, I understand that...
And we're part of a statewide system. So, you can go here, you can go statewide, and then nationally, there's also caregiver programs.
Can you, finally, I understand that you're going to have meetings, or some type of conversation with Dr. Benton?
You heard about conversations with him, yes.
Can you tell us something about that?
Yeah.
And where, when, and what it's about?
Well, right now, the next conversation is on the second, it's right now, we have it on the second Friday, at the Burbank Senior Center. And that's where you, it's a drop-in clinic, and you can come, and you can talk with me about anything you're concerned about around caregiving. I'm usually there for two hours. But, we can hold conversations in, at any of, we're looking at various locations in any senior centers. We can go, I can have a conversation with Dr. Benton at your local church, or synagogue, things like that.
Okay. But you're scheduled to...
But my schedule right now is, I'm scheduled for every second Friday, at the Jocelyn Burbank Senior Center.
Can you give us an address on that? Do you know the address? I don't want to...
I don't know Jocelyn Burbank Senior Center, but, yeah, I didn't bring the flyer either.
Thank you very much.
I didn't expect that. You're kind of very, very well informed.
It's an important issue. I think our community needs to learn more about it.
Yeah. And we love people to drop in on the conversation. It's called Caring Conversations, because we're really there to help.
Have you heard of, have you heard of the work called Memory Care? Have you heard of Memory Care?
Yeah, Lisa's Place Memory Care Center.
And do you provide that, or?
We certainly will link somebody with the Lisa's Place, if that's appropriate, depending on, like, for if they need a support group at a certain time, and Lisa's Place happens to be doing that. Also, they emphasize doing, like, more arts and craft things that help do memory, and very nice memory projects. So, for the caregiver and for the care receiver, it's a really great resource in the community.
And when you...
And then there's, of course, the Alzheimer's Association. As, we certainly link, and that has with the 24-hour hotlines. So, there's, there's so many resources. I could sit here all day with resources. We have a little resource guide, this thick, and that's just with a very, a fraction of the services. But, there's some key ones that we really work with, which is Alzheimer's Association, the LA Caregiver Resource Center, Lisa's Place, probably, almost all the senior centers, because we're doing training and education. We have powerful tools for caregivers, which are six-week classes that are actually evidence-based, and so they really help you build a toolbox of ways to communicate with family members and the person you're caring for, across all situations. And it really reduces stress and makes you feel like a more competent caregiver.
I think we offered...
A powerful tools group.
I think we offered a powerful tools group at Glendale, Venice.
And a savvy caregiver, that's right.
In October. I knew you were familiar.
Yeah.
Nice to see you. The, aside from that, just a couple more questions about caregivers. Are there common statements, or common things, that caregivers say to you, or adult children say to you, when they first call you, that they notice, that can help us distinguish between just normal memory loss, and when we really need to say, let's go to the doctor and have that conversation?
Usually, when they call us, they're not calling us in the early stages. They, I mean, they're not calling, they're probably around the holidays, like right now, when people haven't seen their loved one, maybe they aren't living together, and they're, everybody's getting together, and they notice that the house isn't as kept up as it was, that their parent seems to be struggling with the normal meal, that maybe they're not as neat as they normally are. So, we get a lot of calls after Thanksgiving and after Christmas, because things have changed. They're relative, they're repeating, they're kind of, they may be repeating a story, and it's like, we just had that conversation, don't you remember? And so, then the adult child is, becomes worried, and that's when we'll get a call.
And is there anything that can be done to reverse memory loss?
Well, all of the things that I mentioned, before you think that it's permanent, you need to check your medications, diet, exercise, psychological issues. So, a lot of those, it may not reverse, if it is a dementia that's permanent, or stroke-related dementia, Alzheimer's dementia, Parkinson's, you can't reverse it, but you certainly can keep everyone at their highest level of functioning, by making sure that everything is optimal. If you don't hear something, you're not going to remember it. So, if you have dementia and a hearing loss, if you have the person hearing better, they're going to remember more. So, it will feel like a reversal, because suddenly, they're actually remembering things, because they heard the conversation. Or they're not kind of getting confused, or if they're not seeing so well, and a curtain is moving, and they're thinking, oh, my God, it's somebody in my house. But now they have glasses, and they actually can see that that was just a waving curtain. Again, the person will be a lot better. So, you want to optimize everything that you can with, and your diet, nutrition, all the things that we're supposed to do at every age, but it becomes even more critical when you have a loss in neural cells.
I just want to say that I'm an avid crossword puzzle worker.
Ah, you're exercising that, use it or lose it.
I'm trying my darndest. But I want to thank you, because your information was so valuable and so interesting. One question, use an acronym, and I'm sorry, I just don't know what, I didn't know what it meant. The UDI? What is...
Oh, I'm sorry, urinary tract infection.
Oh, oh.
I'm sorry, UTI. I apologize.
And you mentioned that that...
Well, you know, when you're, when women are younger, when they get a urinary tract infection, there's usually a burning.
Yes.
As you get older, you won't have that.
Oh.
So, you may not know, but it's still the infection, and it'll actually show up more as a confusion, and a memory problem. So, sometimes we have family members calling because their relative is confused. They'll go to the doctor and find out they have a UTI, they get treated, and voila.
I had no idea. Thank you. That's an eye-opening bit of information.
Yeah. And for women, that's one of those things that really changes for a woman.
Amongst so many other things.
Amongst so many other things that I'm not going to be discussing tonight.
Thank you very much.
Really, Commissioner...
Do you want to say your phone number one more time?
Absolutely. Please call 1-800-540-4442. And if you, also, we're on the web, of course, with the Los Angeles CRC.org. And CRC stands for Caregiver Resource Center. And thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking the time to listen today.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
At 3, we have oral comment. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Time is limited to an amount to be set by the chair. The commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or discussion. Staff may refer the matter to the proper department for investigation and report.
We have one speaker, Talene Manglielu, the District Director for Senator Carol Lou.
And we're setting the time at 5 minutes?
Yes.
That's customary for us.
Good evening, Chair Miller, members of the council, and staff. Thank you for allowing me to share this community event with all of you. First, I'd like to thank the commission on being a consistent supporter of the Senator and her outreach. I think we go all the way back to our Assembly Days. And I'd also like to thank the current commission on your support for our youth summit as we move forward. Awareness is one of the many tools we use to educate and empower ourselves. We believe our youth must be well-prepared to face the mounting challenges they encounter every day, in and out of school. And this summit will provide educational workshops for both youth and their parents on bullying prevention, cyber safety, healthy relationships, drug and alcohol prevention. We have two track panel, one for our youth, and one for our parents. On our youth summit, we're going to be recognizing two young people that have had an experience in bullying, and they've both used that experience to turn it around and make it into a positive experience. And we're hoping that with this, with sharing this with our youth, it's going to be part of an enlightenment for them on what they can do when they are challenged. of an enlightenment for them on what they can do when they are challenged. Our date is December 1st. 8:00 AM is registration. It will go on until noon. We have, our outreach is our elementary and middle school kids, eight to 13 years of age. We will have childcare provided by our wonderful commission as we look at them, as I look at them, for ages four through seven. And we'll have snacks throughout the day. The children will, as they leave, they will have, we're going to have scholastic books that they can actually choose and see whichever one they like, and they will walk off with that. Our speakers will include on the children's panel, on the youth panel, I shouldn't say children's, Jerry Oars and Savannah Robinson. That will follow into a presentation by Safe Family Task Force, followed by the Drug and Alcohol Prevention. And that will conclude with safe families. On the parent track, we're going to be having a presentation with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. And that will be followed by a presentation with the Lacrisena Drug and Alcohol Prevention Coalition. And that's going to be concluded with a presentation by one of our young panelists. Questions?
If I might, I've been working with this committee and this should be a fabulous summit. And I just wanted to add to what Talene has mentioned, that we're going to have free onsite children's fingerprinting for parents that want that, need that, should have that. She mentioned free childcare. We are also going to have bilingual-
Translation.
-translations, Spanish and Armenian, provided by the Glendale Unified School District. Can you tell them a little bit about Jerry? Because I think he is such a special 10-year-old.
Absolutely.
He's 10 and Savannah is 14. They each have their stories. But Jerry, who is really exceptional.
Jerry Oars, our 10-year-old, is a producer, a writer, and actor. He was inspired by his own personal experience. He's passionate about raising awareness and educating his peers and community to help end school bullying. His latest work includes an educational film, Day of Science, where Jerry addresses the topic of bullying in collaboration with our office. Jerry has also helped create Senate Concurrent Resolution 100, which declares December 12th, 2012 as Bullying Prevention Day. In honor of that day, Senator Lou and Jerry asked schools and communities to raise awareness about bullying prevention and reserved 12 seconds of silence at noon in honor of targets of bullying. Would you like a little bit about Savannah?
Sure.
Savannah is 12 years old. Her mother posted a video of Savannah singing "I Am Telling You" on YouTube. Ellen DeGeneres saw it and invited her to sing on her show and then signed the record label 1111. The day Savannah was at the studio to record Beautiful, Savannah saw posts on Twitter that said, "Rest in peace, Savannah Robinson." After doing some research, because she was a little confused with the name, she learned that a 13-year-old girl named Savannah Robinson had committed suicide after being bullied. Savannah used this situation as her inspiration as she sang the song, which she addressed, which addresses self-image. Later, she sent flowers to the young girl's funeral. And to keep her efforts moving, she has created a coalition named Savannah's Army. And those are our two young people that will be presenting on our youth panel.
Again, it's on December the-
December 1st, 8:00 AM to noon. 8:00 AM is our registration.
Could you provide the location?
Pacific Community, Pacific Community Center.
Pacific Community. And how do, how are people signing up to attend this?
On our flyers and the mailers that we have sent out, we have our RSVP line as our office. So they can call Senator Lou's office at 818-409-0400. We will take anybody. We only ask for reservations to know if you need childcare, if you need a translator. And space will be limited. So we'd like to be able to accommodate everybody.
And we're recommending that the ages are eight through 13.
13.
Trying to hit the middle school?
Right, elementary and middle school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, please.
Sure. At four is consent items and at A is approval of the minutes of the special commission meeting held on October 1st, 2012. And Chair Miller, Vice Chair Burns, and Commissioner Devine were present at the meeting. So I know not everyone will be able to participate in.
Are there any changes that either of you have to the minutes? Or can we make a motion that to approve the minutes as presented?
I still move.
And a second?
Second.
And I would say that's unanimous. All right, next item on the agenda, please.
At five is business agenda, A, action items. One is consideration and discussion of the sponsorship of Glendale Unified School District Yellow Ribbon Week Hands and Words Project. And at A is a motion providing direction regarding this requested sponsorship. Chair Devine, would you, I'm sorry, Chair Miller, would you like a brief report on this item?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Yellow Ribbon Week is the third week of January, set aside by the school district to raise awareness regarding violence and prevention efforts in the schools. And for the upcoming year, Yellow Ribbon Week is scheduled for January 21st through 25th. And this runs concurrently with the week of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. The Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project is a nonprofit organization located in Salem, Oregon, that was founded in 1997. The mission of the Hands and Words Project is to educate each person in every community about their moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence. The Hands and Words Project includes a pledge that's taken by all the students. And in addition to reaching schools, Hands and Words Project is also found in different government agencies, the business community, places of worship. It's also found in battered women shelters and homeless shelters as well. And the commission's history with Hands and Words Project goes back seven years. And for the past seven years, in recognition of Yellow Ribbon Week, the commission has partnered with the school district to bring the Hands and Words Project's anti-violence program into the district's curriculum. And the commission has historically allocated $3,500 for the purchase of materials, which it includes stickers, buttons, and informational brochures. These are distributed to the high schools, the middle schools, and the elementary schools. I believe that's a total of 29 schools. There have been years where the order by the school district has gone over a little bit by about $100 and the school district has covered that. This year, they're requesting an additional $500. They're asking for $4,000 this year to cover additional buttons and additional informational brochures. They said that they found that that's what they needed. And that's, that concludes my report. Staff respectfully recommends that the commission provide direction regarding this requested sponsorship. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments?
Well, very briefly, Madam Chair, thank you. Well, this is again, one of our staple events and this is something that we all support. If they came to the conclusion that they needed additional $500, that's what they're asking for. Last year, we allocated $3,500. This year, they want $4,000. And the increase is because they have additional informational brochures, another $2,000 or so. I think we should, I think we should accept that request and approve the motion.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions, comments. First of all, I'd like to ask our two ex officios, did you witness this program at your high school? Have you seen this program in action at your high schools?
I actually don't remember if, I'm pretty sure we did, but I can't specifically remember it.
I remember. We do it every year and we have the pledge during snack and lunch. We actually do it. And we encourage students to participate as well.
Okay. So this, because I was thinking that we know that it's very effective in the elementary schools. We know that for a fact. The teachers work out a curriculum. They teach the hands and words, nonviolence, for a few days. At the high school level, I'm not so sure how much goes on. I'm glad to hear that you do. Go ahead. Do you want to?
It does have a profound effect, actually. Not as much as it does in elementary school or elementary level, but it does in high school as well. So you should, you should definitely keep it.
Okay, okay. All right.
One of the things that I might just ask the commission to consider as we look at this, first off, I agree with everything you've said, Commissioner Toshin, about this being a signature item. And I hear that it's effective. And so we know that we've been doing this for seven years and we know historically. I do want to let you know that when the agenda first came out, I did ask Ms. Powers to have somebody come and speak to us from the Glendale Unified School District to identify what that $500 might mean. My purpose for bringing that up is not to split hairs. If they need the money, they need the money and it's effective. But really to understand and to be physically responsible, to really understand what it is, did they run out of materials? Were there not enough students served? So one of the things I might just ask the commission to consider is we know that we can approve $3,500. We know it's been historically done. And when that person from the Glendale Unified School District is back or some, they could always come and present. I mean, our options are to out and out approve what they have or to make the same decision that we've made all along and allow them to come and talk to us about the effectiveness or what they might need or who wasn't served or any of those questions that came up for me.
Perhaps Ms., perhaps Ms. Powers would be able to tell us something about any conversations she had with Glendale Unified School District. I understand you mentioned in your report that the increase was for informational brochures and something else. Did you speak to them?
Sure, yes.
A reason why they're not here today or elaborate?
Yes, Commissioner Toshin, members of the commission, the individual who oversees this program is out on emergency leave and wasn't able to attend. But in correspondence with their staff, they stated specifically they wanted the extra $2,000 brochures for all the schools. I think they do run out. And the buttons specifically were mentioned for the high school students. They don't give the buttons to elementary school because it's sharp and I think also to middle school because of the pin at the end. They like to give them stickers. But the high school students, according to the GUSD staff person that I corresponded with, indicated that the buttons were popular among the high school students. I do know that they do pass out everything every year. It does get distributed and there isn't anything left to carry over. I hope that answers the question.
But also in your report, you identified that they said they were about $150 out of their pocket last year, correct?
Two years ago, Chair Miller, yes, they exceeded, they exceeded by about $100, $125, $150, somewhere in that range. And then last year, they fell about $5 short of the approved range. So this year, they asked for an amount not to exceed $4,000. So it might, it might not be the full $4,000. If that gets approved, it might be a little bit less. Or another route that the commission can go with is if we, if the commission funds as you have historically funded, the school district, I don't think would have a problem with paying the difference as they have in the past.
Comment, Commissioner? Just judging from the comments from the two ex officios, I've always been of the mindset that if we can affect one child, one girl, one boy, one kid that we have in school, it's worth it. So I'd like to make a motion that we fund the school district the $4,000 for the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Vice Chair Burns?
No.
Commissioner Devine?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Garsovanyan?
Hi.
Commissioner Toshin?
Yes.
Chair Miller?
No.
Thank you. Okay. At two is consideration and discussion of the proposed themes for the 2013 special focus for the commission on the status of women. And at A is a motion providing direction regarding the proposed themes. Chair Miller, may I provide a brief report?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Members of the commission, the focus for 2013 as decided by this body at two meetings ago is the spirit of women. And based on direction provided by commission at this meeting, staff collected suggestions for monthly themes from commissioners that corresponded with the overarching theme. And this report contains those proposed themes for each month. And they are as follows. Would you care for me to read them out loud?
Yes, sure.
For January is, in keeping with the spirit of women theme, they're all named with spirit of something. So January is the spirit of determination, rising from poverty in America. February is a spirit of innovation, women in engineering and sciences. March is a spirit of a legacy, women making history. April, the spirit of a survivor, sexual assault awareness. May, the spirit of leadership, women's leadership. June, the spirit of the earth, gardening for the soul. July, the spirit of the arts, celebrating artistic expression. August, the spirit of an advocate, fighting for women's causes. September, the spirit of perseverance, beating cancer. October, the spirit of strength, domestic violence awareness. November, the spirit of a veteran, supporting women returning from duty. And December, the spirit of a woman, celebrating life to its fullest. And as in previous years, the established nonprofit organizations, once this is finalized, will be invited to present information at the commission meetings that align with the theme of each month. And these will be organizations that provide services to the community that are in line with the mission and pledge of the commission of the status of women and serve women and girls in the city of Glendale in some capacity. And that concludes my report. And staff respectfully recommends that the commission provide direction regarding the proposed monthly themes. And I can pull them up on the screen to make it easy for everyone to look at. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, this item is open for discussion. Sure.
Let me see here. The overview is the spirit of women, correct? I don't think we need the spirit of in front of everything. I don't see that it's necessary to have every month starting with the spirit. So I would take the spirit out and have the overall, the spirit of women as our, as our focus. But to me, that's too much spirit. And I just go determination and then rising from poverty.
I agree.
But this spirit on a monthly basis, I don't know. I think we could delete that and be as effective.
Well, go ahead, Commissioner Garsovanyan.
I totally agree with you. We can even say the spirit of determination, the spirit of women and leadership, whatever, and so on.
When you actually see it in writing, Commissioner, Vice Chair Burns has, you've been consistent on this topic all along. And when you actually see it in writing the way it is, I have to say I agree with you. It's a lot. So do we have to, do we have to make a motion?
I have comments. Yeah. In the keeping with the mission of the commission and going back to Commissioner Toshin's remarks two months ago on the goals or the focus of the National Commission on Women was human trafficking and knowing that that is a very, very serious problem and one that this commission should definitely have on its agenda, I'd like to suggest that we have, and January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And so I would like to see us for January, perhaps have something like overcoming oppression. In Senator Lou's office, there's a young woman, new to the office, and her name is Anna Finley, Anna Finley. And she has worked with, with human trafficking issues in the Philippines. We have a huge Filipino community in Glendale. And I think that she would be a- And I think that she would be a fabulous speaker to come to our Commission and speak on human trafficking. And I also feel that even, maybe we could do something extraordinary with her, if not just bring her here. So what I'd like to see is to take out the gardening for the soul, take that out, move, put overcoming oppression in January, and move rising from poverty to where gardening is. Because I'm not quite sure I see a connection. And so that's one idea that I have, to kind of offer a real insight into human trafficking, and I think Anna can do that. And the second suggestion, and it's not a change, it goes with the July, the celebrating artistic expression. I recently heard a speaker who was a, it was healing through art therapy. And he works with vets, and he works with women that are survivors of domestic violence. And he uses drama therapy, karaoke, singing. He uses role-playing. And what they try to do is somehow ease the sexual trauma, the anxiety, from all of these issues that women have. And so I would like to suggest, his name is Bradford Bancroft, Mrs. Martin, and I just wanted to suggest that on that particular month, where we have celebrating artistic expression, that we bring in someone like that, that is, would be, I think, a phenomenal speaker for the Commission. And those are my suggestions.
Thank you, Commissioner Devine. Now, Ms. Powers, we actually have been in discussion with the Office of Senator Carol Liu about human trafficking when we presented it a couple of months back. And I know that they were going to come back to us. Certainly, certainly this is something we can consider.
Absolutely.
But we can resume the conversation with them again, or?
Yep, certainly.
I don't know that there's, Anna has sent an email to myself, and I think I forwarded to you, that she would really like to come to the Commission. She's all for it. She's going to try to speak to other groups in the community. So there, I don't know that there's any doubt that they wouldn't, she wouldn't do this.
I think, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think the sub-theme of human trafficking, or something related to human trafficking, is important. And since January, as you've indicated, is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, then perhaps the sub-theme for that month should be something related to human trafficking. And I would support that.
Yes.
Well, we're rising from poverty in America, and I think that that's going to go along with human trafficking. I don't necessarily think that we need to change January. However, if you want to change January to human trafficking, and I think rising from poverty needs to be somewhere. But I...
I think the suggestion, Vice Chair Burns, was to call it overcoming oppression.
Overcoming?
Oppression, uh-huh.
Instead of?
And within that, you could include human trafficking.
And rising from poverty.
No, rising from poverty might move down. Now, the only other thing that I just would want, where all the comments related to July about healing through the arts, there's also an aspect of healing through gardening. When gardening was considered, it was considered as one of those techniques as well. So there's no reason that we have to have two months back-to-back like that. We certainly could look at gardening being just one modality of an artistic healing, like music there, like artistic creation. Any of those things that really adds meaning to one's life could be moved into the spirit of the arts and healing.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I totally support human trafficking fitting in somewhere, and I think it's a great fit for January with oppression. But I would like to speak out for gardening, because it doesn't only encompass the physical art of gardening for me. It's also about meditation, and we could bring in like the 21-day meditation teachings of Deepak Chopra. And I think meditation goes so hand-in-hand with gardening that it's really, it's a key aspect of aging. And I know that was last year's ago, but the spirit of a woman, and I mean, I don't know, meditation is very important.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may comment?
Mm.
Thank you. I'm a little bit confused about the December theme. I don't quite understand what celebrating life to the fullest is. So perhaps somebody could explain that to me. Secondly, I understand December is, let's see, International Human Rights Fund. So perhaps December, we could address human rights regarding women and girls as a sub-theme. I'm just bringing that up for conversation, as opposed to celebrating life to the fullest.
Chair Miller?
Yes. And speaking on that topic, we just had the shooting of Malala, what was her name, Malala in Afghanistan, 14-year-old girl who stood up for girls getting educated, being educated. And that is a human, definitely a human rights violation. And I think, I think you're spot on, Commissioner Toshin.
Are there any other months, for example, that, because certainly rising from poverty in America is an important aspect of the spirit of women. It also goes along with some of our other community partners that we're working so closely with, the Office of Senator Carol Liu. I know that Women and Children in Poverty is one of her platforms, so it keeps us in line with some of the things we're all working on next year. I would like, or I would like to see that topic stay, but are there other topics that maybe could go off?
I think we might be able to combine March and May, women making history and women's leadership.
That's a good point. And we do know, going in, just in terms of our own topic, women making history and leadership, if we were to move it, knowing our next topic is the Jules Luncheon, historically we're in that month, I would think that would be a very nice May topic for us to consider, being in line with other things we're doing. What do you think about mixing, putting together women making history and women's leadership?
Madam Chair, you can also look at August.
That's a very broad topic, fighting for women's causes. That needs to probably be defined.
But we also should look at the precursor to all of the themes, and that's advocacy. So it's more focused on, I think, petitions, and protesting, and fighting for women's rights.
Just a thought, I'm going to ask to have gardening left. Absolutely. I think that we shouldn't spread gardening out to anything else. We need to keep gardening in. It's too important for a lot of people.
And it's also not just gardening, if I may.
No, it isn't.
About the earth and nature.
Yes. It does spread a lot more than...
So where are we now?
So legacy and leadership, are those two words, again, going back to March and May, because ones that, are legacy and leadership more likely to be two words that go along in people's mind together?
Are you talking, I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
March and May.
Yes, are you talking about combining?
Combining, following Commissioner Garsofian's suggestion.
For which month?
Legacy and leadership.
Okay, so March is Women's History Month, and May, in other words, move May into March?
Well, frankly, no, I would actually, if you really want to know, if we were to follow the suggestion to have overcoming oppression in January, with the theme being, or the human trafficking being within that month, I would see that poverty, rising from poverty, could actually go to February. And then women in sciences and engineering could move down to March. And then women making history really can come under women in leadership, and all else can stay the same, except for the December comments as well.
So women in history would be in May with women in leadership?
Yes.
And it doesn't have to be women in history. We did that because of Women's History Month.
Right.
But women in engineering and science, I mean, when we think about what happened last year and what took place, with just the women who spoke at our last luncheon with the JPL, that's women in engineering and science, and making history right there. And it'd be great to get them in front of a bigger audience.
Okay, so January, we would, overcoming oppression with human trafficking as a underlying theme or topic. February would be rising from poverty in America, correct?
Mm-hmm.
March, what would be March?
The spirit of innovation, women in engineering and sciences.
Okay, April, April will leave as sexual awareness, assault awareness month. May would be women's leadership.
And legacy.
And legacy.
And we could, yeah. And then June would stay as gardening. July, and then everything else exists, but down in December, we would specifically map that out to be international human rights focus.
I believe the reason we had February as women in engineering is because that's the month, it's women in engineering.
And given that you are going into engineering, I would always expect you to keep us around. Do you talk to us about what that would look, talk to us about some of the themes then in February? Are you against it being moved to March?
No, I'm just thinking that because that's the month for it, it would be appropriate to have in February.
Well, and March is nutrition month, if we were talking in health sciences, so we could put poverty in that area in March and have it be a good fit.
Chair Miller?
Yes.
I thought I heard you say that March was Women's History Month.
The spirit of legacy has women in history, but what we're doing, what we're considering is mixing legacy and leadership in May.
Oh, but, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said that March was?
It is women's.
Women's history awareness, so seems like it might be a perfect fit to keep that there, keep engineering where it is, and then shuffle the others around.
Well, we had a speaker last year come in on Women's History Month. So I'm not, I think that we can still pay tribute to women in history, but we can do it under a different topic.
Like leadership.
And Chair Miller, I think I remember that we had the difficult time figuring out who to bring in to speak on women's history, didn't we?
She was fantastic. That was a great speaker. She spoke about the history of Glendale women.
Oh, she was the newspaper, yeah, that was Natalie.
Yes, that was Katherine Yamada.
Yamada, yeah, yeah. And I will just tell everyone, as we were considering, not that it matters, but as we were considering our topics the previous year, that was the topic that I understood the least, and that was the speaker so far that I really is in my top five. She was fantastic.
Chair Miller, may I just, in going over some of the notes that I've been taking that the Commissioner's saying, the, just for clarification purposes, the only month that I heard that, to kind of take it off and didn't hear objection to, was December, spirit of a woman, celebrating life to its fullest, unless I missed an objection from somewhere?
I don't believe you did.
Okay, so just for the sake of, just another suggestion is to, it seems like the Commission has consensus in putting human trafficking in January, overcoming oppression.
Overcoming oppression.
Yes, overcoming oppression, and we can focus on human trafficking if appropriate. And it might be nice to move rising from poverty in America to December, since it's the giving season, and always nice to highlight that. And then seeing as to how there's support for all the other months in there, kind of keep everything intact, unless I'm missing something.
But I think December, go ahead.
Chair Miller? We had mentioned, Commissioner Toshin had mentioned human rights in December.
Okay. It's international human rights.
Because it's internet, yeah.
International human rights, okay.
Now, but going on, I like where you're going, Ms. Powers, and one of the things that could be addressed in the international human rights is poverty. It's an international issue, is that? And if that, did you have something different in mind when you were?
I didn't have poverty in mind. I was more thinking about human rights with respect to women and girls as a topic that I was thinking of. I didn't have poverty in mind.
Okay. Then we should go, everybody more in line with where Commissioner Toshin's, okay. So we are in agreement, just to do a recap, Ms. Powers, we are in agreement that December would become international, and the focus would be on human rights. And so, and we are in agreement with January that it would be overcoming oppression, we would focus on human trafficking. So the next aspect becomes the spirit of innovation, women in engineering and sciences. We've been told that that's February month. We can either move that to March, or we can keep it as February, and have March be a focus on rising from poverty. I bet you there's some great information of women in history that rose from poverty and made a difference. I mean, we could still be about rising from poverty, but knowing that it's Women's History Month, we could perhaps...
Absolutely, we can highlight.
Chair Miller?
Yes.
Were we not encompassing poverty and overcoming oppression?
I see, my understanding from listening to the whole discussion is, the human trafficking is very different, and stands on its own in terms of some substantial time being addressed to it from poverty.
I'm a little confused as to what's going to be our sub-theme for February. Now, we have women in engineering and sciences, and I understand that that's the month that they, I guess, celebrate engineering and sciences. But my understanding was that you wanted to have February as rising from poverty in America as a sub-team. That's what I thought.
I had, you know, initially, when I started to speak, that's what I identified, just for simple linear moving everything down. But then when student ex officio Yegian identified that that's Women in Engineering and Sciences Month, then I started to look at, well, March is, you know, in the healthcare world, it's nutrition month, it's stroke month, it's...
So what is Women in Engineering and Sciences? What is that?
What do you mean exactly?
Well, I don't understand why we have a sub-team for Women in Engineering and Sciences.
Because it's becoming such a, rather than it being a subject just for men, a lot more women are becoming interested in it when they didn't believe that they could. And especially with JPL and the Mars Rover, a lot of people didn't realize how many women were actually a part of that until they started looking into it. So just showing women that they could do it, and also the Mars Rover's spirit and opportunity. I thought that tied in quite nicely.
And that could be tied into women's leadership also, and women making history. If, more so than leadership than making history.
I agree, but with the age that we're living in, and engineering and sciences, and, you know, with all these iPhones and things, women don't, I don't really see women going into this field. And I think bringing attention to it might, you know, wake someone up and say, oh, that's what I want to do.
Chair, may I? The AAUW, the Association of University Women, they send young girls to summer camp for a week to a tech track school. And it features a future in a girl's opportunities in science, technology, engineering, and math. It's a fabulous program, and I think that for us to highlight that and let young women know that there are opportunities for this kind of a program and this kind of a future, I happen to know a woman who is... I happen to know a woman who was an engineer back in the day, one of the few that was hired by and worked with all men, and finally got out of engineering because she saw her future, which was nothing in engineering. And I think we can change that perception, I think, by bringing attention to the educational possibilities in engineering and science, and I think you make a very good point.
But isn't there other topics other than engineering and sciences? Perhaps it should be changed to women in perhaps the leadership roles in the present and the future, or something?
Well, the actual, the actual topic there is innovation when it came out, and then with the subcategory being Engineering and Sciences, but the real thought around February was innovation. And innovation, although it's certainly something we see in our leaders, it seems like it deserves a category of its own.
Okay, so what are we going to do with February now? Are we going to leave it as is?
Well, I think when we look just up here with the discussion, I mean, certainly we don't have to take a motion on just that one month, but I am getting the impression that student ex officio Yegian would like it to stay, just so I can get my, Commissioner Garciapone has already commented that he would go that direction. Commissioner Devine's identified that she would. I would, so, Vice Chair Burns?
You would what?
I wanted to know if you had a comment on February.
I think we need to add more topics than Engineering and Science if we're going to speak about women in the different areas. We need more than Engineering and Science as part of the, as part of looking at women in any of the other women as, whatever, CPAs, every single, every single area we could look at as where are the women and what are they doing in each area of education?
Do you think we can...
Instead of just, excuse me, Engineering and Science.
Do you have a question?
I was just going to say, do you think we can bring in that aspect in Women's Leadership?
Sure.
Because I think it's important to highlight, like Commissioner Devine said, you know, this one specific region that is pretty much our future.
So, I'm just gonna, this aside, very, thank you so much for all your comments, and we can still, of course, continue. I just want to know from a time standpoint, would you, would the Commission like more time to think about this and to hold it over to a next meeting? Or are you, are we ready to go forth and start tacking down the months and make a motion?
I think we should do it today.
I agree.
All right, so, well, at least we know where we're going. So then, going forth from there, are there any more areas of discussion before I walk through or before I have, it'd probably be best if you walked us through what you heard on the individual months. Yeah, let's do that.
Good luck.
Okay. For January, I have overcoming oppression and looks at human trafficking. February will stay as is, innovation, women in engineering and sciences. March will be the January subject, Rising Determination, Rising from Poverty in America. April will remain as Survivor of Sexual Assault Awareness. May will combine leadership and legacy, so it'll focus on women's leadership and women's history. June will remain as gardening for the soul. July will remain as celebrating artistic expression. August will remain as looking at the advocate and fighting for women's causes. September will look at cancer awareness, will remain the same. October will remain the strength with domestic violence awareness. November will remain the same with supporting women returning from duty and veterans. And December will be International Human Rights. Staff is missing anything, or if I have something turned around, please let me know.
I don't...
Under, yeah, and the, everything sounds great. The only other comment I have, I do recognize, I do certainly recognize October, working in a healthcare organization, how important it is in terms of breast cancer awareness and beating cancer and those things, but I wonder if it could be overcoming health odds, or, you know, when we think of, when we look at the other aspects of all the other titles, I wonder if on that one we specifically, I mean, certainly they can highlight cancer, but, you know, heart disease is in the top three things affecting women.
Number one, actually. Heart disease is number one.
So...
So, would that be then to change September to...
Well, the spirit of, I like perseverance, I'm just wondering if it's, you know, about overcoming odds or...
Overcoming health-related odds?
Beating disease, right. Winning, winning the fight or the challenge.
Beating disease?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I want the spirit of the veterans, supporting women returning from duty. I think it's way too down in the list. I think November should go up to the top of our list so that we can start working on, we were really looking at women veterans as a very important part of this coming year, and then we have them down in November.
Well, in terms of the actual, if I may, and I wonder if this, and I see where you're going, it is in, I'm actually, I'm actually working with the mayor and a coalition for veterans in the City of Glendale Veterans Resources. And very soon, early in the year, earlier in the year, I'm going to say in the first quarter, we will be having some speakers come before us who will present specifically about resources for women veterans. And they will be doing that through the open, the oral comments, and they'll be identifying, we're just specifically in terms of our resources, I think they'll be coming all along because we have a number of different things. In fact, one of the groups were invited tonight to oral comments, but given the holiday. So, I do think that we're going to hear more and more from this individual group and specifically what's happening for women and veterans all along throughout the year, and then by November, I think we'll really be able to have a pretty fantastic speaker in here. Does that change anything for you?
Sounds good to me.
Did you have any comments?
No.
Okay.
I have one comment.
Yes.
Is there a way for us to change the title of the Gardening Month? I don't think that truly encompasses what you're trying to say, meditation and all that.
Do you have any suggestions?
No. I just think it would be good to encompass more than just gardening in the title.
What about Living in Zen?
I did actually hear you, Commissioner Garciapone, use the word earth in your description that was so compelling. I heard you use it. I like the word earth. I'd stay with earth.
Oh, no, I'm fine with earth. It's just I think she's talking about the second part, gardening for the soul.
Commissioner, Chair Miller, may I?
Yes.
Maybe we could do something, that month, on stress management for women and bring meditation in and gardening and that sort, those sort of activities in that way.
I think we have enough stress for the rest of the year. I like it just the way it is.
Is that what you meant in your description that sort of helped us all out? Is that what you meant, including stress management, including the meditation?
It's definitely one aspect of it. Maybe we can, maybe we can go with something like combating stress with nature.
Oh, that's it.
May I?
Yes.
Or just combating stress? And then the speakers can be accordingly asked?
I just think that we should...
Through nature, yeah.
With earth being there, it should be related.
And I think the combating stress through nature or keeping the word nature in there or keeping the word earth in there is definitely, that I am hearing in the majority of the comments, I am hearing that people were in agreement of that, right? Someone stop me if I...
Yes.
Okay, so, did you get through all of them?
I believe I did. I can, we can do it again one more time if you'd like to, just so we make sure everyone's on the same page.
I think we're on the same page.
The changes, sorry.
Go ahead.
The changes are...
Let's have you do them one more time and then we'll take a motion. Thanks.
Okay, so for January, we have determin, overcoming oppression, human trafficking. February remains as innovation, women in engineering and sciences. March becomes determination, rising from poverty in America. April remains as the month of the survivor, sexual assault awareness. May will be leadership and legacy, looking at women's leadership and history. June will remain the focus on the earth, combating stress through nature. July will remain as focusing on the arts, celebrating artistic expression. August will remain focusing on the advocate, fighting for women's causes. September will remain perseverance, but beating disease in general rather than beating cancer. October will still focus on strength, domestic violence awareness. November will remain focused on veterans, supporting women returning from duty. And December will focus on international human rights. I don't have the tag word for December, but I do have international human rights.
May I?
Yes.
Can I suggest on that, what was the one about disease fighting?
Beating disease.
Can we change that to beating chronic disease? That would be heart, heart disease, that would be cancer, that would be Alzheimer's.
I don't...
Chronic disease, I don't know if Alzheimer's...
I don't know that chronic...
Is the correct word?
Um, let me think what I...
Diabetes?
Yeah. Is it, it's beating, chronic isn't, isn't, chronic is like the fibromyalgia and the diabetes and the, yeah.
I'm not sure that chronic is the correct word for cancer. Chronic to me means it's, you're automatically going to get it, or it's usually coming in old age. It isn't, cancer doesn't necessarily...
Well, I think what you're trying to speak about is debilitating.
Right.
That's really what you're getting at, because, and again, I could be like, you know, I'm taking the word very literal, but we could call it, so, can we just call it beating disease?
What's wrong with that?
Debilitating disease? Preventing, preventing debilitating...
If you get another D, it'll be DDD.
Do you have one?
No. Defeating?
Defeating, that's very good. Defeating disease. What do you think about that?
But we have to have the...
Defeating debilitating disease. There you go.
Okay, I'm in.
Defeating debilitating disease. I think that's very clear. All right, so, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? After all that, no motion? Hello?
Make a motion that we...
I want to look at December one more time.
Okay.
Just a little bit of time. I think we're somewhere, somewhere in this 12 months, we need to celebrate something. And I think that word celebrating in December sort of fits. I mean, this, this is something that maybe we should think about using, at least the word. We've got to celebrate something.
Well, it's in July.
We're celebrating artistic expression and women's leadership.
Uh-huh. But don't we have a party or something?
We can have parties all, every month.
We need a party. We need to celebrate.
Commissioner Devine, you had a comment. You had celebrating human life.
Human rights.
Human rights, celebrating human rights. What do you think about that?
Taking life to its fullest out.
Yeah, celebrating human rights. Okay.
Fine with me.
We need a party.
Do we have a motion now?
Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the month themes as Mrs. Powers, Ms. Powers, Mrs., sorry.
Ms.
You can call me if you want.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
We're in the middle of a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Ken, comment after.
As stated by Mrs. Powers.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And are we unanimous? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Motion is approved. Okay, this item is now closed.
Decided.
Now closed for discussion, yes.
Okay, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I had an idea about this spirit of women that we're doing next year, and I'm just going to throw this out there for everybody to think about, and if you, anybody thinks we should pursue this, then it would be up to Chair Miller and Mrs. Martin and, I mean, Mrs. Martin, I knew I was going to call you that night, Mrs. Powers, to take it to another. But, you know, I have a, I have a thing about acronyms, you know, with the CPR, the Commission Project Rescue that we do for the police department, and I just thought kind of with the spirit of women that, and Ms. Varpetian has recently been asked and has accepted a position on the Board of the Salvation Army, and talking about women who are in need. And because of this spirit, I was thinking of if we could, this Commission, because we, I don't know about the rest of you, but I get such a terrific feeling about what we're doing when we have, when we hear about the police department and when they use our CPR money to rescue a victim of domestic violence. And so, I was thinking that we have a lot, we have a couple of programs where we deal with young girls. We have our Rosie, we have the Hands and Words, we have, we have another one that we use for young girls, but for spirit of women, I was thinking of Spirit of Survival. And if we could somehow do, and that's SOS, by the way, SOS, have a Spirit of Survival grant, and this would be given to women in transition, women who have, are going from a domestic violence shelter, then to the transitional housing, and then on to the real world. And, or it could be to a vet that comes home and is injured and needs a hands up, just needs a small amount of money, like $500 or $1,000 to help her to get her life back in order. And I thought that perhaps the Commission would, we could present this at any time during the year where we had an applicant or a person that we, that we meet along the way, or that someone comes to us with, let's say, Ascensia or Salvation Army, or, you know, there are all kinds of organizations. We could present it at Christmas. We could present it on Mother's Day. We could present it on Veterans Day at different occasions. But it's just a thought, you know, we raise all of this money every year at our luncheon, we've done it for years, and we have a pretty good bank account now, and I think that we can use that money to help women in our community. And I just wanted to throw that out. It's Spirit of Survival, and I think it's something that if everybody would, or some of us would like to carry forth or kind of look into, it's just an idea.
I, thank you, Commissioner Devine. I find the whole, I know that the entire Commission has spoken about the need for what we will do with our grant money and what we want to do, and I know that different people have come up with thought processes. And I, as Chair, have also been thinking through a number of different things that I'm not quite ready yet to present to you as a Commission to vote on. But your input and your thought process and your, where you want to go on that is certainly beneficial to the Commission, and I think that if all of us, I know all of you have brought up different things at different times, but if we really want to, now that we've got the themes aside, we can certainly talk about the direction for summer 2013, and it can include that, because I think we're all, we're all on the same page about certain things that we want to do. And, but if we could hold that to a later meeting when I think it's more formal, that's the direction we'll go. Okay. Now, this item is now closed for discussion. If we could go to the next item, please, Ms. Powers?
At three is consideration and discussion of the date and venue of the Ninth Annual Jewels of Glendale Fundraising Luncheon. And at A is a motion to approve, approve the proposed date and venue of the luncheon. Would you like a brief report, Chair Miller?
Yes.
Sure. The Commission on the Status of Women's Jewels of Glendale Awards Luncheon is the major fundraising event of the Commission on the Status of Women. And this upcoming year, 2013, will mark the ninth anniversary of the event. At the last meeting, the commission selected Vice Chair Burns to serve as the chair of the event. And she will work with staff to ensure and oversee the proper planning, coordination, and implementation of a successful event. And at this time, Event Chair Burns and staff request to solicit commissioners to volunteer their efforts in the following four areas. The first is sponsorships. This commissioner would coordinate materials for sponsorships. The second area would be advertisement, and this commissioner would coordinate the solicitation of advertisements for the program book. And the third area is silent auction and giveaways. And this individual would coordinate solicitation on behalf of the commission of items for the silent auction and any sort of, if there's any giveaways, things left at each seat for each guest, that would be coordinated through this person as well. And the fourth is speaker slash talent and awards. This individual would, along with Event Chair Burns, secure the speaker and any entertainment for the event, and also select the jewel award winners with her.
On the actual business agenda, though, that today's, we're voting on the date and the location.
Yes. And, and individuals can also, if, if the commission's ready to at this time, individuals can volunteer for each of the different four categories. The most important thing, though, is the date, securing the date and the venue.
Okay. I thought that I had opted to, I, I thought that I had opted to hold.
Oh.
Only that I thought today's was a discussion on the date and location and a vote, and we were going to move.
And we can certainly do that.
But certainly keep going with your report, and I can see where the rest of the commission's at.
Okay. Thank you. So, the, the proposed date that is just tentatively set and it's for the commission's approval is Thursday, May 9, 2013, at the Oakmont Country Club. This is where the event was held last year. The selection is based on direction provided by Event Chair Burns as chair of the Jewels Luncheon. And also, the event has been successful there in the past two years. And Oakmont has really provided the, the best rates for the commission to have a profitable and successful event there. And once the date has been approved with Oakmont, staff can proceed with drafting a budget for the commission's approval. Also for your consideration today is the nomination period for the 2013 Jewels of Glendale Women of Courage Award. Those will need to be opened, and if the commission can also provide a date where the, the nomination deadline will close as well. Once the nomination period is open, all interested parties or organizations will be encouraged to nominate up to two women for consideration of the award. And this award is awarded to women who work, live, or study in Glendale, have overcome obstacles, serve as role models in the community, and demonstrate exceptional strength, courage, and perseverance. Also for the commission's consideration is the Gem Award, which is awarded to one outstanding high school senior who is engaged in community service reflective of the values and mission of the commission. And the Gem Award recipient has been historically awarded a $1,000 scholarship and recognized during the luncheon. Staff, just as a tentative date, has recommends opening the nomination period for both these awards on Monday, December 3, 2012, and closing them on Friday, February 1, 2013. And this is similar to dates used in previous years. And that concludes the report, and staff respectfully recommends any direction provided by the commission. Thank you.
Well, Vice Chair Burns, as our chair of this event, do you want to start off with any comments or add anything to that?
This is, this is good.
Okay. So, for the motion purposes, could you identify the date and the location again?
The proposed date for the Jewels Luncheon is Thursday, May 9, 2013, and the location proposed is the Oakmont Country Club in Glendale.
And we know that May 9th doesn't coincide with any, we know that there's a number of, like, it's not the mayor's prayer breakfast.
Based on information that staff has at this time, not aware of any conflicts, if there's any, one of the nice things about, you know, we want to see if there's any conflicts that any commissioners are aware of around that time. This is, this Thursday does fall, it's the, it's the Thursday before Mother's Day. And for the last couple of years, it's just kind of worked out that that's when the luncheon's been held. That's why this date was selected. The, the Oakmont Country Club is also open May 2, and May 16, I believe, is the following Thursday. So there is flexibility. But as it gets later in May, I know we run into more and more events.
So do we want to make a motion on location and date? Does anyone?
Yes.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion that our luncheon be held on Thursday, May 9, 2013, at Oakmont Country Club.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion is unanimous? It's closed. This item is now closed for discussion. Well, actually, the motion is approved, but in terms of discussion, do we want to, is, do we want to go forth and make the decision on who's doing what based on the descriptions provided by Ms. Powers?
I already know what I'd like to do.
Oh, that's great.
I, I haven't actually, I don't know what I want to do, but I do want to ask Ms. Babu-
So we can assign you if we all know?
I was going to say-
Is that how this works?
Well, why not? I was, I was going to ask Ms. Babunyan, but, sorry, Ms. or Ms. Powers. The nomination period is, is pretty early, December the 3rd, and it ends pretty early, February 1st. Why is that? Could we perhaps go from January to March?
May I say something about that?
Yes.
Please.
Sure. Every year, we set it as, as late as possible as we can, and then we extend it and extend it. So I think to have an initial earlier date is, is important. So people get in there and send it in on the last couple of days, and then we'll extend it up, maybe.
So why don't we do December 3 to perhaps March the 1st, as opposed to February 1st? I mean, I'm just bringing it up. I mean, it's not something that's important.
Sure. Commissioner Tashin, one of the reasons that historically the, the deadline has been in February is to provide enough time for the appropriate commissioners to meet, have enough time to review the applications, to meet, to select the, the jewel award recipients, and for the commission to have enough time to announce who the winners are, and make sure that gets into the program book, into the invitations, and can get printed into the invitations, which can then get distributed hopefully about, you know, two months prior to the event. So closing it in March would slim that opportunity down.
Okay, that's-
Traditionally, it's worked the way we've done it in the past, correct? And people go forth?
Okay. That's, that's fine.
So I think as we go forth in this discussion, looking at item, if we are to go forth, one, sponsorships, two advertisements, three silent auction and giveaways, and four speaker talent awards, I do know that I'll be working with Vice Chair Burns, who's the chair of the event, on speaker talent awards. So I think it's really items one, two, and three we'll be looking at. Yes.
I'll be glad to take advertisements.
Well, so that's me.
And Commissioner Garzafanian, what, what did you want to work on?
Well, you stole mine, so I'm, I would like to do silent auction items and giveaways.
I only get to steal things, so to speak, as the chair, so, well, you'll, you'll forgive me, right?
Of course.
All right. And that means, and again, we will have secondary, we will have primary and then secondary people. We can all help with sponsorships and such, but-
So what does that mean?
Commissioner Tashin, means you take off April and you get us all the sponsors we need.
That's what I want.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's what I was hoping for, actually.
All right. So, great. Then we're set. Vache, Commissioner Tashin is sponsorships. Commissioner Devine is advertisement. Commissioner Garzafanian is silent auction and giveaways, and speaker talent awards is myself and Vice Chair Burns. And again, I'll be happy to work on any of the other areas that I can. Now, our Student Ex officios, Amy Yegian and Serene Jerubian, what would you like to work on?
Please. I'd like to work on the speaker and the talent awards. You okay?
That's the only one that's not available. It's one, two, or three.
Okay. Probably the advertisements.
Okay. Jaburian.
And I'd like to help with the silent auction.
Great. Okay.
Thanks a lot, girls.
I'll help you with the, okay. All right. So it looks like we're all set.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, commissioners, and thanks, everybody, for cooperating on that.
Very briefly, is, is this a motion, or is this something that we don't?
No, it's not a motion. It's just, just-
Okay.
The motion was the date and location, and the assignment went fairly easy, and so we are there. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your cooperation on that. Now, with that being said, this item is closed, and we are now on to the next item, Ms. Powers.
Thank you very much. At B, we have reports information only, and at one is the Commission on the Status of Women's 2012 Master Calendar of Events. This is the commission's recurring calendar. If there's any revisions that need to be made or additions, please let staff know, and we can do that at this time.
Great. Any, okay. Next item?
Thank you. At two is an update regarding the Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities. And would you like a-
Yes.
Brief, make it very brief. Chair Miller, members of the commission, last month, the commission's Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities, also known as DEVAM, took place. The first was the proclamation from the mayor and city council designating October 2012 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Glendale. This was presented to Chair Miller, Vice Chair Burns, and Commissioner Devine on October 2nd at the city council meeting. They accepted on behalf of the commission. Also accompanying them was Police Captain Michael Brock. The second event was the annual candlelight vigil, and the commission partnered with the YWCA of Glendale to present this annual vigil on Thursday, October 18th, at the YWCA. This was held in memory of victims of domestic violence, survivors, and those who had lost their lives, and also provided an opportunity for awareness and education. Speakers at the vigil included Mayor Frank Quintero, Police Chief Ron DePampa, Michelle Roberts, who's the executive director of the YWCA of Glendale, Chair Denise Miller of our commission, Talin Mangioglu on behalf of State Senator Carol Lou's office, and there was also a domestic violence survivor. Assemblymember Mike Gatto also presented the commission with a certificate of appreciation for its grant to the Glendale Police Department to help provide emergency housing to victims of domestic violence. And staff estimates that approximately 100, probably a little over 100 people attended this event. A new event for DEVAM for the commission this year was a film screening, and this was held by the commission in partnership with the Armenian Relief Society of Western USA to present the short film Loves Me, Loves Me Not. And this took place Thursday, October 25th, at the Glendale Central Library. And the film, which really took a stark look at domestic violence, was followed by a question and answer session with a panel of professionals representing various backgrounds within the various fields of domestic violence services. This panel was comprised of Detective Steve Corrigan of the Glendale Police Department, Raquel Ortiz from the YWCA of Glendale, Heather Poole, who's an immigration attorney volunteering at the Domestic Violence Project of the LA County Bar Association, and Dr. Levon Jernazian, a psychologist with the Armenian Relief Society's Child, Youth, and Family Guidance Center. And approximately 35 people were in attendance at this screening. And also as part of DEVAM is the Teen Domestic Violence Palm Cards. And at a previous meeting, the commission had decided to allow a committee to redesign the palm card from 2011 containing information on teen dating violence and to finalize this design with staff. The committee has met to present its feedback, and graphic staff is currently working on finalizing the palm cards for final approval from the committee. And once finalized and printed, these palm cards will be distributed to the high school students in Glendale and the Glendale Unified School District, so this does include the private high schools in Glendale. And staff anticipates that the palm cards will be printed and distributed by the end of this month. That concludes staff's report. If there's any questions.
Thank you. Well, I just want to, in relation to that report, I just want to thank the entire commission for all your efforts. October was a very demanding month, and for all the different events that you turned out to support what it is we do and to support domestic violence. It was very, very, we are very, very grateful. We're also very grateful to our partnerships, great community collaboration with the YWCA, and our new partnership with the Armenian Relief Society. We hope that that, that was an event that was really fascinating and moving, and we hope that that, our work with the ARS continues to grow as we have seen what we do with the YWCA. We hope that it turns into a, a great community partnership like that as well. So thank you for that report. Now, can we move to the next item, please?
Absolutely.
Great.
At six, we have commissioner and staff comments.
Okay. And we are going to start over here with you, Commissioner Yegian.
I'm just very excited for the spirit of women, and I know that we're going to do a lot with all the different topics we've decided.
I'm going to keep mine just as brief. I wish everyone a healthy and happy Thanksgiving Day.
I would like to reiterate that also. I think we're very lucky to be living in a country where we don't have to be thinking about our daily safety. So I would just like to give thanks to everyone.
Well, I, I think Donna Benton is not here, but if she was, I'd go down and hug her. She gave a fabulous, fabulous information that we, that we all can learn from. I was going to ask her if, when I looked in the mirror and didn't know who it was. Is, is that a sign of something? Is it? Anyway. Do you recognize yourself? I don't know. Well, the, the vigil was well-attended, the film Loves Me, Loves Me Not. I'd like to see us do that again. I'd like to see us present that again. 35 people saw it, and perhaps those 35 people could, would, would bring a bit more enthusiasm. And, and we need to keep showing that film, I think, because it's, it's a tough one, but it needs to be shown more than once. Fireman's Lunch was great, very successful, and Senior Live Well Program on Hips and Knees, Heads and Shoulders and Hips and Knees, Friday, November 30th, at the Glendale Adventist Auditorium. Dr. Khan will be the speaker, and it's, this is going to be a wonderful program. So anyone who's worried about hips and knees, get over there, November 30th. Oh, the parking's free, right?
Yes.
Parking. Okay.
So's the lunch.
So's the lunch.
So's the humor.
True. Festival of Trees is coming along December 2 at the Hilton. And Hometown Heroes, this is the second annual breakfast, December 7th, 7:00 AM at Oakmont. And it is, it was a wonderful breakfast last year, and I think anybody who is, wants to honor our hometown heroes, show up 7:00 AM at the Oakmont. And the Sir Optimists are having an awards luncheon on December 20th, I believe. And I believe that we're going to get some, a donation, aren't we?
Well, we'll have a December meeting, so we'll, we'll talk about that.
We'll hear about that. Yes, but our December meeting is only 10 days prior to this event for Sir Optimist. You think that's enough time to let everybody know? Well, they know now. Now, the Glendale Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, I want everyone to save the date. 30 years ago, we had Pat Boone as our keynote speaker, and- Thirty years ago, we had Pat Boone as our keynote speaker, and, um, he is the keynote speaker for the prayer breakfast at our 50th anniversary. And that will be March 21st, save the date. We should have some surprises with Pat. I think that's all.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving! Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for starting the organization on the Jewels Luncheon, Commissioner Devine.
It's all done.
Is Pat Boone going to have his white bucks on?
Damn right, I'm darn right.
I just wondered, not many.
Sure, white.
Not many of us remember that, but.
That's okay, you do, it's all right, as long as you do.
Yeah, yeah. My mother-in-law used to say, you know, she'd walk by a mirror and go, "Who is that in the mirror?" And, you know, of course, it was, yeah, so we, we all relate to that.
I'll know about that one.
Yes, we do, yes. Um, I meant to, um, to congratulate, um, Talin Manjigulu. Her son-in-law, Adreen Nazarian, was elected to the 46th District as their Assemblyman. And he was, uh, in his former life, uh, working as District Rep for Assemblyman Krikorian.
That might be nice.
And, uh, he was always, Adreen was always so supportive of this commission. He was at our events, um, and he, he talked about them and, and let, uh, Assemblyman Krikorian know about them. And, uh, so I just want to congratulate him, it's fabulous, they got a, a really good, uh, official in that district. Uh, I want to, uh, thank all the sponsors that came to the Glendale, um, Healthy Kids Gala. It was a really special event, it was really a lovely evening. I also want to congratulate, uh, Mike Haney, who's President of the Board at the Glendale Community College, because they held their first gala this, this last month, and, uh, it was fantastic and very successful. And, uh, Mike and I go back a lot of years to the beginning of Relay for Life, so, uh, good job, Mike, and your board, and, and everyone associated with that event, it was spectacular. Uh, congrats to Carl Povolitis. Uh, he won the campaign for the Army of Pink, there were over 80,000 votes cast, and, uh, again, I thank everyone at Glendale Adventist that had anything to do with me being the captain of that, uh, that campaign. It was a lot of fun, raised a lot of awareness, I met a lot of wonderful women along the way who were breast cancer survivors, and, uh, thank you all for, for voting and for watching all those videos. Uh, let's see, um, want to, uh, give kudos to the, um, Armenian Medical Society Ladies' Auxiliary, they held their annual luncheon, uh, and it was, of course, very lovely, as always. Ramella Marcarian at, uh, at the hospital does a great job. Um, I would like to, um, wish all of you very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, first off, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving. And second of all, I agree with Commissioner Burns that we should show Loves Me, Loves Me Not more. I, I was affected by it, I think we need to educate women more about domestic violence, the general public as well. And I'm also excited for the spirit of women, Mike, Amy. Um, I think we're gonna have a really good year. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, first off, and in my comments, want to close out the month of October and also, um, talk about Army of Pink campaign, to thank Commissioner Devine for being, uh, the general of that group at Glendale Adventist, but to also thank two of our students on, right here, on this commission for participating. The winner was Captain Povolitis, I was his campaign manager. I can't sit up here and not say how thrilled I am, as much as I like all the other candidates a great deal, I am thrilled with the outcome. Also, what made that happen, combined with our two students who went into their networks between Glendale Community College, Glendale High, our friends at the YWCA, as well as the 14 other women that we had on our underground Captain Carl team, it was thrilling. But most importantly, we raised awareness for breast cancer. He's a great candidate, he took it serious. And again, our partnership with the police are very, very, it's a very valuable thing to us at Glendale Adventist. I was also asked by our friends at Wellness Works to just identify, and again, in the interest of time, I, I want to keep, keep this brief, but to let you know that if you haven't heard about Wellness Works, look them up, they are very important in the resources they offer to our veterans coming home. Just this past Saturday, right here in Glendale, they had a Welcome Home BBQ. And again, if you, if you haven't been in the community such where you're hearing about all these resources of veterans, this is a very special group, so, they are Wellness Works, and I encourage you to look them up. Also, I was asked by the Chrysina Valley Drug, um, and I have this all written out, yeah, I'm getting, um, the Coalition and the Chrysina, uh, La Cenada Family YMCA, to identify that they have parent resource workshops, and this fall, their focus was on the family. So as a nice combination, you had heard what Senator Carol Lou's office is doing through their Pathways Program and the summit they're providing, but the CVDAPC and the YMCA up in La Chrysina also have these ongoing workshops that they provide, and you, you can actually see them here. We have three left, uh, tomorrow, the 27th of November, as well as December 4th. And all of the, the topics around that are the social influences, the bullying, and then what to do. Uh, the speaker will be talking to the teens about creating a relationship, the, the parents and the teens, creating a relationship with a child that makes them feel safe and teach them how to navigate through difficult situations. On a, uh, different note, I also, as you know, gearing up from Thanksgiving into January, we're going into some very exciting times. Our Glendale City Council did sign off on the 2013 Rose Parade float, of which the Alex Theater, the Americana brand, and Glendale Adventist Medical Center are set to, to be very much involved. What you see here on the screen is your ability to sign up and volunteer. We need lots of volunteers to decorate our float. And, um, if you go to the website, that is the Glendale Adventist Medical Center, and you type in Rose Float Volunteer, it will take you right into the page, it'll identify the different dates that the Rose Parade float is available, and that you can sign up and be a part of this history in Glendale. With that said, I would like to close, um, I would like to close by just saying a short thought about Thanksgiving and something that I read. It's called "The Best Thanksgiving," and it's by an author, a female author named Joanna Fuchs. It says, "That Thanksgiving is here, so our minds have turned, to what time has taught us to what we have learned. We often focus all our thought on the shiny things we've shopped and bought. We take our pleasure in material things, forgetting the pleasure that friendship brings. If a lot of our stuff just vanished today, we'd see the foundation of each happy day. Is special relationships constant and true, and that's when our thoughts go directly to you." We, as a commission, wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving. We hope it's one that, that you'll never forget, one that's full of abundance, love, and joy, and one that is the best one yet. And with that, I am going to make a motion to adjourn at 7:35 PM.
Second.